Okay, it is seven twenty-eight calling to order the Board of Alderman's special meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Orsini, here. Alderman Hudson.
President.
Alderman DeWaltson.
President.
Alderman Deckard.
Here.
Alderman Rogers.
Rogers.
Alderman Magley.
Yeah. Alderman, you please stand and join me in question. My delivery please. Thank you so much.
Good point. Alright, well, thank you all for scheduling the special meeting, I appreciate it. So tonight, basically gonna be a high-level overview of the budget and what it may look like for this upcoming year and where we're kind of at right now. So, right now where we're sitting at with our sales tax dollars, we're about eleven percent short of where we were this time last year. We still have one more month of sales tax to bring in, but we are not going to be where we were at last year.
Question?
Mm-hmm.
How much did we budget if sales taxes come in? I think less than a fee.
I believe I did ten percent, I think I did seven. So, I had estimated that we would be, actually we brought in three hundred and seventeen thousand, almost three hundred and eighteen thousand in sales tax. And, we are at... Five hundred and seventy is where we were proposing, and right now we're just over five hundred and nine.
You have one month left?
One month left.
You're going to buy things now.
And that's just the, the, the one percent sales tax for the city, um, obviously the park city, um, but the public safety sales tax and the transportation sales tax are sitting right about the same. As far as being at a loss for that this year, so, um, going into that, knowing that, um. So, we know we've got some big stuff coming up this year with the trees. Um, we've been doing, uh, talking to Matthew again today, we've been doing, um, a pretty good job the last two years trying to get our fleet back up to where they should be so we're not spending quite so much money all at once, um, trying to fix, repair, replace. Um, so this year, I think that we're going to be able to kind of cool it a little bit on that. We have one, um, presentation from the police department, I'm gonna give you guys an overview of that to think about, um. It's gonna look like we're wanting to buy more, but their presentation is really pretty good on what it could possibly save us in the long run. So, I'll get into that when we start getting into the police department. So, things that we're looking at going into this next year, we do have, um, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of unexpended ARPA money that we had assigned to the general fund. So, I'm looking at using that for the trees. That will help us get our first good chunk of the trees out. Now, we don't have to come up with, when we're looking at cutting the trees into three years, we needed about three hundred thousand dollars minimum for each year of the next three years to take down the amount of trees that we want to get down. So, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is gonna help get at least almost halfway to that first-year mark so that we can work on that. So, I am, when I get the budget presentation ready for you guys in March, that's where you're gonna see where I've got that money assigned to. Also, this next upcoming year is the year that we need to redo our comprehensive plan. So, we'll be looking at doing lots of committees and meetings, and that's where it goes in with P and G, we're gonna need them quite a bit. City code, we're gonna be looking at overhauling quite a bit of, um, the zoning code, so there's gonna be lots of meetings with planning and zoning, plus members of the community for the different boards we're gonna need. Since our comprehensive plan is so recent, um, it's gonna be a lot easier than seven years ago when you guys went through this, so. But in Maryland, so I'm glad to have people around who were actually on those boards and committees, um, it should make this a pretty smooth process is what I'm hoping for. We do, I have talked to, um, Midmo RPC, they are willing to work with us again this year, who will probably have to go out for bid. Um, the reason why, I, I was talking to David Bach, and he said that, um, we had qualified for a grant that just happened to be out at that time last time. So, um, I'm gonna be getting a quote from them to see what that's gonna look like, we may have to go out for bid, but, um, we'll just see how that goes. But, we are up next after Bowling Green is when they'd be able to start working with us on that. The other big thing that we are gonna look at for this upcoming year is our financial software. When they sent us our re, our annual fee for this year for G-Works that where all of our financial software is at, payroll, this does not include our utility billing, our utility billing is separate, we're also seeing a price hike with our utility billing. But, it tripled our financial software with no notice, they sent us a letter and it, it tripled from the year before, it was eight thousand the year before, we got a bill for twenty-four thousand dollars for this year, please pay within thirty days.
Did they give any reason, anything, just to work it over or what?
They did send us a letter that explained that costs are rising, um, they're moving everything from, um, what it is currently to more cloud-based. And they said with those improvements, there's increased costs, um.
Cloud-based reduces costs because they don't have to operate servers, but it's... We're building... Just go put it locally here.
So, we are, um, going to look at moving away from the current provider, we don't believe that the, the service that they provide us, um, is worth the amount of money that they're asking for, so.
Well, when the audit becomes up, the, the software isn't what they expected it was for security, things like that.
Yeah.
I spent on the list for a few years, I remember you and I walked... Who would be the...
Something that would remember us, yeah.
Well, prices are going up, yeah, prices are going up, they're not going up two hundred percent.
It was, it was, it was a shock to get that, um, we did send it back to them and say, no-go on it, so we did get it reduced a small amount, they had actually included something in there that wasn't supposed to be. So, we did get that knocked off, um. But, yeah, so we will be working on doing that this year. By the end of the year, we'll need to have a new, um, software company selected and then placed. So, knowing that, um, that would be something that would not only be a general fund cost, that would be spread out between all the different funds. We wouldn't have to worry about...
Do you want the utilities too?
I, I would like to, because if we can find, if we're going to do this, we might as well see what's out there and see if it can all be one software that can, we can put everything in, yeah. I'd like to find something that's also customer-facing so that when we have business licenses, or building permits, or any type of permit, they can go online, fill out the permit, fill out the business license application, everything is right there. Um, they can update their own records for our, for like our business, um, local business, um, directory, stuff like that. It would of course come into us for verification before getting, you know, the permanent okay, but, um, I know that stuff is out there, we just need to see what it is and how much it costs.
And the utility billing software, maybe we can do the deal where people can log in and pay out.
Well, we do have that now.
Sort of, we have, we have, you can use a, a, or pay a three percent fee.
Yes.
That's opposed to, you know, put in your account, stuff like that, like my Henry bill, which doesn't have a three percent fee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's lots of different things that we can look at, um, we've got some good references that other municipalities use, and they really like the companies that they use, so we'll kind of be starting there, doing some... Some feelers out, see what you do. But, it's gonna be a busy year with, with all of that going on, and...
Burning the cost on that will also maybe be considered.
Yes, um, G-Works will make us purchase all of our archive records and all that.
Yeah.
Yep.
I live in that whole...
Gotcha. Change the chart of accounts? Oh, I was gonna say, we just went through that not too long ago. Okay. Alright, we'll just jump into it. So, I'll start with the fire department. Again, not going over everything that we've went through in our, um, preliminary budget meetings, but, um, just off the top, we have a nineteen ninety-six truck that gets used maybe five to six times a year, um, it's the medical truck. So, um, when they go out, it struck eleven oh six, it only has twenty thousand miles on it, it's a nineteen ninety-six truck.
That's a big one.
That's a big one. So, um, Matthew had a great idea, buy an SUV, it's not going, the truck is diesel, correct?
So, that's the original, yes, the, the medical truck that is used the other seven, eight months is the mini pumper truck. It's an F-five fifty, loaded down with water, it's basically a, a mini engine, uh, diesel fuel. So, instead of running that truck, so right now what we're doing is because of the cold weather, we take that truck out of service because you don't want the water freeze up in the pumps, so we run this nineteen ninety-six. What I suggested is maybe we look at getting an SUV and, and just basically pushing that to the EMS side and say, outfit that vehicle for your EMA, EMS stuff, backboard, med bag, and then leave the firefighter, firefighting trucks alone in the building. A, more cost efficient on fuel, you're not lugging around a big fire truck. B, it's a little easier to handle, you're not always running lights and sirens, but, uh, with that being the most volume of calls that we have EMS-wise, you know, it's a little easier to handle those vehicles, um, you're not having water push you around the road responding across town. And, uh, so that's just something that I thought maybe, instead of having a piece of equipment in there that's sitting, just sitting in the, the fire station, we could move around some trucks, um, and then basically just add this. I know that, uh, Chief is looking at possibly with grants coming down the road, if we end up with a, a new fire engine, he would minimize one of our large fire trucks now that we've implemented this ladder into the fleet. So, we wouldn't necessarily need all the big trucks with that, with that truck in there, so.
Well, how, how many miles do you use that a year, you think? He said it goes out brief.
So, the, the eleven oh six that she was talking about, yeah, that's gonna be your primary response vehicle.
All these calls?
For all the calls.
Ninety-three in January, it would go out all...
Yeah. Uh, just a little more cost efficient to run, uh, that vehicle than a large F-five.
Do you need a new vehicle, or can you get a good used one?
I don't, yeah, I mean, I think either, I think you can get a good used one. Yeah, I think it will, I reached out, uh, and got some, you know, rough bids on what it might bring, and I, I was in the twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar range.
So, we're thinking it's not gonna be like a break-even deal, but it's gonna be pretty close.
It'll take a good chunk of it up, um, so, and ultimately it's not up to me, it's up to...
Apparently new, slightly used SUV, if you're buying something that's a office, you know, you have the dealer, it's gonna be in the low twenties, low in the twenties, so you might actually get one and then you just outfit it.
Yeah, and that's another thing is on that truck specifically, we have new light bar, new siren, new radio in the truck that we would sell. So, we would just transfer that stuff over, um, to minimize some of that cost as well. May have to, new siren or something like that, but that's minimal cost for them. But that's ultimately up to the chief to make that decision, I just...
And you wouldn't be driving a year, probably.
Right.
Eight months out of the year, whatever.
Right, yes.
You're driving SUV with EMS calls, you said we did eight hundred EMS calls last year, that is obviously going up based on what it seems to be. Well, it's January. That seems like a reasonable... Realizing, and, and I would suspect it's gonna cost us less than five thousand.
Yeah, it just depends on...
It depends on what we get.
Probably fine.
What, what, I mean, it's not, it's not like it's gonna cost us thirty grand for a new vehicle, if we're selling one by another, and whatever the difference, not...
We come out good on a fire trip too, we save, what is it, what, twenty grand on that?
Twenty-five, yeah. So, just trying to get some equipment in there that can be utilized a little more instead of just sitting, maybe change up some procedures and, you know, utilize the equipment that we've got now and maybe remove one of the larger, larger trucks. The reality of it is, is that the building that she was discussing, the police fire building, great idea, and hopefully one day we get there, but we all know that's not gonna be a quick process. So, we've gotta utilize what we've got as a building now, and that truck is eating up a lot of room as where SUV would not...
The equipment is expensive.
It is.
Vehicles, whatever, you gotta protect them, it's, can afford to work on.
Just as we know. But, you know, that's something that he is, uh, Chief is looking into possibly.
Is that nineteen ninety-six vehicle that we've gone out, does it ever break down, has it been good for all these?
Oh, it's had, you know, minors, not anything crazy.
Been a good vehicle, hasn't it?
Yeah, no, it's a great, it's in, I mean, pristine condition. It is, uh, it is in very, very good shape. It does no good to sit in there, you know, let's get something that we can...
It looks good though when you're on a call, it does, it looks like it's very important.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's...
SUV won't have that impact.
Well, yeah. Just a lot to figure out, put your face on the side.
Big lights on it.
From a budget standpoint on that?
Uh, no, not from a budget standpoint on that. No, like, like I said, if we get a good return from selling, uh, the original, yeah. And, I mean, when you consider over time, we're gonna be saving money because we're not utilizing as much fuel to drive the, the mini pumper and...
Don't think it'll pick up, our practice is high build too. So, I mean, you drive it one time, if you drive levels...
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're ultimately, that's... Yeah, that's the vehicle that goes, and if we have to go fire assist with the ambulance, that vehicle is dedicated to go down there and get them.
I just bought a twenty-twenty-three SUV with a thousand miles, or three thousand.
Vehicle prices are going down finally.
Huh?
Vehicle prices are going down finally.
Yeah, so something like that, I mean, that was last year.
Got the, the deal on the chair.
We should get it soon, yes.
Let's outfit it.
Yeah, we need one at a time here. Alright, move on to the police department, so I have been approached by the police department, um, to see if the board would consider a take-home vehicle policy over running vehicles, um, twenty-four-seven. So, um, just off the top, uh, reduce time between maintenance, um, five thousand miles between oil changes, less wear on the tires, um, less wear on the brakes, reduce veh- visibility on sitting vehicles, um, with minimal cost to implement, um, I was asked, talking to Harlan about this, what he would look at if the board chose to go this route, um, we would replace the Charger and one other to keep one, but we would need to purchase another one in order for there to be enough take-home vehicles. But, the example they gave me was, so we bought the three Durangos all at the same time, right? Same vehicle, same amount of miles. Um, one of these Durangos was assigned to Officer Hicks who lives here in town. His vehicle has eighteen thousand miles on it. Let me make sure I got that right. Average miles per year is five thousand. Another Durango which was, um, issued to Officer Cable who also lives here in town. It was originally, um, one of the vehicles that they use in rotation, so it was being used throughout the day, all day and all night. It currently has fifty-two thousand five hundred miles on it, um, with average miles per year almost eighteen thousand. And then the other Durango has seventy thousand six hundred miles, because those are being used consistently throughout.
Right, number of police vehicles in use. Somebody go back there, yeah, somebody walk in. Police vehicles in use, probably twenty-four-seven, there's a whole lot of idle time, running time, it's sitting, especially cold weather. There's weather, so mileage may be... I love not reflective of engine run.
Right, yeah, they do, they run. Do you have any comments on that, on how much they run?
And, and we're sitting for a long period of time, we're, we've got my custody or something like that, we're shut. You gotta think for twelve hours a day, they're pretty much...
How's a take-home vehicle do more difference than what we have now?
Because that vehicle's already running twenty-four hours a day, so like, out of, uh, thirty days a month, we work fifteen of those days for twelve hours. Perfect example is, look at the, the Durango with seventy-something thousand miles, that's a line vehicle, so that's being drove by day shift during the day, but actually, I purchased Jason's vehicle, which only being on, Jason is working eighteen thousand miles for seventy, what'd you say, two thousand?
Currently it's seventy thousand.
Yeah, and, and they walk the same time, in service at the same time, use, you know, so there's a difference, when you're looking at over fifty thousand miles in the same time period, something different.
But never, not every officer would have their own vehicle?
No, that's what...
They currently don't have...
Vehicles will last longer, your maintenance will be lower, uh, you can imagine it's a set of times, a car, something out of my officer's station.
Don't we have your one police officer, you're in ten hunting vehicles?
We have ten officers.
Those were the least, weren't they, when we bought on the lease board?
Yes.
And they were new, weren't they?
They were brand new, and we're looking at needing to replace eight twenty-four, which is the one that has seventy thousand miles on it in early twenty-six.
Well, this was something we actually talked about a couple of years ago, um, and we're leaning in that direction. Um, but, when Bob came on, um, we kind of went away from it. But we were leaning this direction and getting closer to having it.
What liability issues do we have?
So, I could, um, check in with Mama to see, but, um, I do know, like, the county sheriff's departments, the highway patrol there all take-home vehicles.
So, we're...
Uh, take rand all, actually. So, to do this, we need to buy one new vehicle.
Well, no, so we do need to replace the Charger, um, that one, the maintenance on it is outrunning, so we would...
Two vehicles.
Two vehicles this year.
We replaced one in that one, so we...
More vehicles? We get them?
Yeah, we currently do not have ten vehicles.
We have, we are...
Seven?
We have rechargeers to tacos, uh, the Charger, DCS, you got that?
We have to buy the one we have to replace, I mean, that's, 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 we have to do that, so all we have to do to make this program, we have to buy a...
I guess we're gonna need total new vehicles.
Three.
They don't need to be brand new, so I was talking, so I was, I don't even know we're talking, because I was like, three brand-new vehicles off the bat is a bit much, so, we can get Chargers from the highway patrol for twenty, right around twenty thousand dollars apiece, and that's what he would look at for this...
Twenty thousand apiece?
Twenty thousand apiece.
Well, that's a fact. So, everybody who live in town?
That, no.
Looks for this person like...
Stoby. You think you're the person?
Oh, yeah.
I thought Stoby was the person. Okay.
So, what are you gonna do with part-time?
So, that's, that's kind of the other issue that I'm proposing as well, is getting a degree to a soccer player, officer, in part-time. Now, the issue we got right now is part-time, we have a lot of part-time officers, uh, we used to have a pretty decent reserve force, now we're down to, I think, two or three, and they're all kind of coming in, um, off. So, you got sub-blocks there, you know, you could build up, we got two main units, which I think are way more proactive, you see a lot more, you get a lot more done. Or you could buy a second car or keep one of the ones you're thinking about hit for though, uh, as a repair back car. Because you also have the issue if you, if you just get enough as many police officers as you have...
One break that.
Exactly, you're gonna be out of car.
You need more than ten cars. You need...
How far do you want it up to?
That's the theory.
Yeah.
Well, you could buy three at twenty thousand apiece, and, and what's the mileage, thirty, forty thousand, something like that?
How many civilians are alive that's been five thousand, that's what they should have?
So, can you buy five for twenty thousand?
You can buy all of them you want.
Yeah, we can get as many as, on that, I, we would not go with tacos again.
So, if you bought three vehicles, how many would that be total?
I'm speaking thousand there.
Why would you not go with tacos? Why would you not go with an all-wheel drive vehicle?
You can get, they're starting, they have the all-wheel, well, plus they're V-six, which I think is better for in-city driving anyway.
They, we're, we're inside city, they don't go outside city limits really, unless they're doing something else, but it's all on hard surface roads.
The tacos that we have, two-wheel drive, they were terrible this winter, to be honest.
And one of them, we had an engine problem with, that we had to put money in right off the bat to use it.
How many officers live outside the city limits?
So, we've got...
If you go with the program, you gotta do, you either gotta do them all, or you don't do it at all, all but three.
Yep.
I've got Lucas...
Lynda?
Harris, Hicks. He's outside town. So, we've got two, but Jason Hicks is leaving.
We've got Higby, Cairo, Mexico, Hallville, or South of Hallville, wherever they live.
Maybe there's a hybrid approach. Those who live in town, that's what it's would give, those who, well, those who live in town have take-home cars, those who don't live in town, their cars can stay in town and they could also then be used for the parking cars or backup cars, that's what you do.
That's, that's what it is now.
I mean, that's where we're gonna park all these cars.
Yeah, we can't add more cars and not have them taken.
I mean, that's, but you just said exactly what we do now.
Well, we don't have ten, I'm, I'm saying there would still be a need.
Right.
But then, I'm trying to avoid driving them twenty-four-seven. Like the guys that work the...
It'd be hard for me to, just like, where are we gonna be around this, this town?
When the citizens are driving from here to Walmart to Columbia, and they see a police car, Centray police car parked in a driveway in Hallsville, you're gonna hear about it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and that's, that's a good valid point, if Hallsville does the same thing, they have their police officers.
I don't care about what they do, I care about what we do. And the perception is gonna be, we're paying for the gas to go out of town, and I don't, I don't like it.
That is a complaint we hear about the number of cars that we already have.
But we don't, but they're not taking them home now, they're here. Which is more visible. I, I mean, there's pluses and minuses here, I, I don't like the minus of an officer that chooses to live out of town, which is their prerogative, I understand that. And that doesn't mean that the city of Centray has to pay for the gas, then the... And that doesn't mean that the city of Centraye has to pay for the gas, and to drive back and forth to home.
So, okay, so the average miles driven extra per vehicle per year that they've gotten figured out would be right around thirty-four hundred miles per year. So we're looking at, you've got a, an in-town person who's got a vehicle seventeen thousand miles, so if it is now a take-home vehicle for someone who lives outside of town, it's gonna add about thirty-five hundred miles, that you're still at less miles per year on that vehicle than the one that's on the line being driven.
You can't explain that to the citizens, let's see, in trade car parks, he's.
Just because of the answer.
How many people here are familiar with the old conservation of boots stuff?
What?
The, the whole idea being, the conservation of boots, um, you can buy a twenty-dollar pair of boots that'll get you through a season leaky and before they're done, or you can buy a hundred-dollar pair of boots that'll get you through ten seasons and your feet are covered. When we're looking at buying these vehicles, I know we keep looking at, at the, the highway patrol vehicles and where you get those highway patrol vehicles kind of, you know, on, on a short dime. And why we not fixing them and things? Really, we put a lot of money into them, a lot of fuel into them, so. Let us put something on the table as an alternative. It would, it will cost us more money initially, it will save us more money in the long term. And that is that we start looking at hybrid vehicles, now you use the word hybrid, but it's for different. Hybrid vehicles, police vehicles. Not just for fuel savings, because they do, they save a ton of fuel. But more to the point, one hybrid vehicle is in power, just standing still, what is, as people learn a lot of times, or you're sitting there waiting, watching. You know, okay, correct. Um, you're not burning any gas, the engine is not watching, the engine doesn't run until you push down on the, put it in gear, push down in accelerator. Which means you are not putting all of that additional wear and tear on the engine, which means it's not effectively putting a ton of miles sitting there idling. And burning all the gas while you're doing so, yes, it's more money moving forward, yes, it would mean we slowly phase out the current vehicles while we slowly phase in hybrids, it would be a long-term project. In the end, it would save us a lot of money.
I can look into it, have you, do you even know?
There's not a special police officer's vehicle that's still on hybrid check. They've been testing other things, uh, actually used to have hot seat vehicles, which is what they call it, and they run all the time, it hasn't lasted, so upkeep and maintenance repair costs on those are economically high, and you're very slim on where you can get repaired, especially being in Missouri, so.
Here's the thing, but, but we are not a major city, we are not trying to run these things on the chase across twenty-five mile cities.
Yeah, it's, it's the city. And we can't, it has to have the, the yaks and throttle button engines.
And what it does, set up, you know, begin effectively, I go amount of time, and you take the end to the, enough to bring your battery back up, and then you back off. Maybe every, depending on the, depending on the land of hybrid vehicle, you're telling them fifteen minutes. At the end of the day, honestly, depending on, yeah, if you're getting four, your maintenance officer is gonna be through it for, if you get something. Your maintenance is not going to be that bad because their maintenance is obviously.
Jessica, when there was a stop like that, do the heating and air conditioning systems still work in them? Some people told me in some of the hybrids, when they're, when they're not running, they don't work.
That would be my first question, I mean, I'd be like, so you mind?
That's the EV, it'll hurt, but it, air conditioning will work, but you're, it, it, a charge doesn't take you nearly as far. He's talking about a hybrid, which is, which is different. I think probably the hybrid, it's gonna be a little more expensive to buy.
They, they're a little more expensive to buy, you get it back, you know, it works easier to buy, but you get it on the back end, in the fuel savings, the wear and tear savings on the engine, because these being a police vehicle and, you know, it's a bulk. Get it done on the back.
We, we were maybe asking the chief if he knows any contact, if he would have any information on it, if there's anything else. Not about no police vehicles, well, the key does.
And that's absolutely true.
Hearing what you say, and then.
Sure, yeah, there, as far as, there's not a rent out of the mansion, um, so police vehicles are built differently, they're very. A Dodge Charger, but it's not the same Dodge Charger that you're gonna go back and go buy, you have a lot of stuff on them, just as far as I mean, running all the electronics that we do, I don't know, that, that's, that's, I mean, if you, but that's like one of my things about, they handle a lot of.
Maybe that's why we do this plan or not, I mean, we need to buy it.
Well, if you go with this plan or not, we need to replace two vehicles.
We gotta get these two vehicles.
Yeah.
And how soon do we need to get two vehicles, please?
They would just be, it would just be the next year, we trade them, and, yeah.
We gotta replace it.
Yes.
Question is, do we go to plus three, even more?
You're gonna have to have a car to break down. Break down the big bag, I'm gonna have to have more than ten dollars.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta have it. So is this first come, first served on these twenty thousand dollar vehicles, I mean, today? Is there a lot of them?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot, you're not, you're not in danger of missing.
The only question I have, I know we gotta balance our budget these as well as vehicles, and if we do this, if we buy.
Free shipping, you do get free shipping.
We're buying a half dozen or so. Used vehicle. Versus two or three newer and.
So I'm glad you said that.
How do we move to?
This would be the stop, this would be the stopgap. So basically, whatever vehicles got put into rotation for out-of-town officers versus in-town, you'd mix that up a little bit, so there would be staggered mileage on those vehicles. Um, you would give the higher mileage vehicles to the officers who live right here in town, so you start dropping down on those. Um, so it would just be a rotate, but eventually, we're not buying used vehicles from the highway patrol anymore, we're rotating into newer vehicles. That way we can keep them longer and realize more of our.
Then new vehicles, we were, we weren't buying, we thought of that, then we bought three Durango's, and we started buying highway patrol cars, and we quit.
We had two, oh, two different chiefs too.
We changed our philosophy quite now, and, I mean, since I've been on the board, and we didn't stick with a single philosophy like we were going to, where we were gonna start rotating and every few years, kicking off a couple more purchases of new vehicles, which is what we said we were gonna do. Much with chief changes, philosophy kept changing, we need to get a philosophy going, and go stick with it, so that we're buying new cars essentially, with whether we have seven or ten, or whatever the number ends up being, we pretty much need to be buying a new car or more every year for a police department and rotating them through.
I'm spending a lot of money maintaining highway patrol vehicles though.
Well, they had the one had an engine problem.
What was that one?
It was eleven.
One out of how many?
One of the Durango's people, or not the.
Well, no.
The top. Uh, the old, I think the old gray one, now the, the, the white one still has had its own fair share of problems, but.
Which one, we, we put motor in charge.
I don't. This year?
We put a motor in that white Tahoe.
That's twenty-five thousand.
That time when Jessica came on the board. Is that the Charger?
I thought that was the Tahoe. Yeah, because she asked for a different bid, because the first one was high, that was the Tahoe.
That was the Tahoe.
And it was eleven thousand dollars replacement, we just looked at it, yeah.
But I probably put a motor in charge.
I didn't, yeah, I don't recall that, but I know that surely it wouldn't have been any more than a Tahoe. Placed, I mean, I don't, I can't imagine a Charger motor being twenty-five with a Tahoe motor, meaning, could be though, I don't know. We, the COVID kinda messed us up on, we were in the motion to do that, rotate, buy a new car every year or anything.
Our rotating police chiefs messed with that.
Actually, we had some of it.
New police chief, new city administrator. There's lots of different things and changes going on, yeah, we had a lot going on.
Yeah, but, I mean, we need, we need a philosophy, and we need to stick with it, because reality is, whether you got seven police cars, twelve you need to be buying a new one every year, or two every three years or something, or three every two years, something like that. Just because you've got that many, no different than a fleet of other vehicles for the utilities, you've gotta be investing in something every year to keep the fleet going.
Yes, right now, on our, on our vehicles in the utility side, our trucks, our ten-year rotations, ten or, ten or one years. Well, this problem's not gonna go away, so we gotta be on top of it. We just gotta decide what. I like those twenty thousand dollar cars. Yeah, but here, we're saying that, but then we're also just talking about putting an engine in. Well, so it's like, you're saving off the top, but are you at the end of?
I'm kidding with the visibility.
I, I. Do you think you will, because it is.
We don't know, we make this requirement.
We don't know.
I hear that now.
If we kept track of that.
Three more. They're gonna go out of town. I'm not, I don't think we'll.
So do we want to pay for police vehicles every four years, buy new vehicles every?
I don't know, that's what I'm saying, you're coming up with a plan, you gotta come up with a plan, you gotta look at all the numbers.
What's the new vehicle called? What type? Huh? What type? The same price, the same type of twenty thousand dollar vehicle would be, like a Durango, whatever, I mean, or those. Oh, I'd say the Durango's they drive probably are thirty, thirty to forty thousand dollar vehicles.
Forty, you're hot.
They're thirty-six thousand apiece, I believe.
I would say the initial cost is probably along with that, but add another, probably five to seven for.
Yeah, Harlan says about seven thousand dollars.
There were three vehicles that are police rated. There's a group, so what ones were those? There's a Ford Explorer, the Chevy pickup truck, and the Ford F-50, all three have. That I'm aware of.
See, I mean, it's twenty thousand versus thirty-five thousand, it's, that's, news start, starting to look a little bit.
Yeah, but not, not if we gotta buy three to five or six vehicles, I mean, if we had to buy one, yeah, our budget can't handle that many. Not five.
And kind of the nice thing about buying the vehicles from, um, highway patrol, they've been outfitted with lights and sirens and I was talking to Harland, I think it's only a few extra hundred dollars more to keep the lights on it, so we can just transfer those, that way we don't have to buy a whole new light package for the vehicle. So, um.
The time for outfitting is usually about thirty months. It comes down to stickers and a handful of, or a big house or whatever, a handful of things, not full.
Not a full outfitting.
Yeah.
Did they give you warranty at all?
Yeah, they were down the mark.
I'm liking it twenty thousand again.
Um, it was just outside of.
Was it a hundred thousand?
No, um, I think it was at three years or something like that.
Yeah, a year in miles.
Yeah.
What do we want?
So you don't need to make a decision or anything, mostly I'm giving you guys the information, you can ask me some questions, so I work with everyone and the officers to get them answered and.
Any specific questions we wanna get there to come back with us on?
When is this gonna come up again, October or this year? April, April.
Yeah.
We're scoring on time here. You have time to think about it.
The next time we're talking about this is at the next budget work session in March.
Also, would there be a way to, policy maybe for those who their cars outside of town to reimburse gas or something, or, I don't know, so maybe.
I've never heard of that, because most of the time when, and it's a little bit different for like a county sheriff, they go on duty and respond from their homes. Obviously, our guys wouldn't be going on duty and responding from home unless there's an emergency and there's sirens back to Centraye, but, um.
And when you're out there month to month, you always see, you've got one police car at the shop every single time.
Lives there. I think he lives there, I think he's at the local market shop.
Lots of people make comments about that.
Oh, they do.
Yes, that's what I'm getting, it's a, there's a optics situation when you have take-home police cars, because people start wanting to think, well, why is it there? Why does that sit in there?
So it is becoming more common for police departments, sheriff's departments, um, to have take-home vehicles, just because of the problems that we've kind of outlined that the officers have told us about with the, the wear and tear on the vehicles. So you'll notice driving through town, I'm sure you've noticed, Auburn County's here, Boone County's here.
We just have to be ready when people come forward with those, well, why are those?
So, that's what I'm going to make sure we get out as much as possible, if we decide to go this route, is showing how much we're spending currently on maintenance of these vehicles, um, how often we're having to purchase new vehicles with our current plan, and what it looks like with a take-home.
We'll save us money, I mean, just.
We're gonna provide you guys the best of what.
Think about it, well, is, you know, when it comes to recruiting or retention of officers, you know, when they can look at other agencies in the area that allow a take-home policy and the pay is better, one of the things that just didn't help you recruit, I mean, uh, one of the biggest things that people will tell you why they want to work at one agency or another is the fact that they have equipment and they have a take-home car, um, because then I don't have to worry about landing spills fresh drive underneath the seat, that's not a long shift, it's much.
Sharing your office.
I don't make sharing my desk to someone else.
An example you gave is seventy thousand miles versus eighteen thousand miles tells a huge story on two cars that are, one's been a take-home car from the get-go, one's been in rotation from the get-go. You guys purposely rotating the best you guys can, tells a significant story of two cars that were purchased at the same time. One's gonna need to be replaced pretty soon. Based on the highway patrol, that might should already be retired.
Yeah, we're buying, we're talking about buying fifty thousand, buying cars.
I know, the seventy thousand mile car would already be retired, based on their standards.
Yeah, but not on our standards, we got a lot of miles left on that.
I'm just saying, but, but it still tells the story pretty clearly.
Well, I think it's more about how fast you get that, yeah, that's, that too. Did you buy those Durango's in what year? It's been three years, three or four years.
We paid on them for three.
It was the early lease one?
Yeah, it is twenty, wasn't it?
Finished the lease in four, yeah.
It was, it was twenty-four.
So, I mean, thinking, so on page of that seventy thousand mile car, over that period, only put eighteen thousand. Fifty-five thousand mile car. And then you show work in some places or.
Replace a new vehicle instead of used, and we're keeping them a lot longer too.
Any questions that we need to, need Tara to do homework on for us?
I'm gonna get you guys maintenance records.
For me, you're gonna be just fine than taking them home, when they live out of town.
You think about that till April first.
April first is.
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, you.
I don't have to think about that too.
You'll wake up in the middle of the night.
Next time.
That all the police department needs, hopefully, just five cars?
Um, for the most part, yeah, they just said just give them money for cars, and we can scrap the rest of it, drop the budget down quite a bit. They don't need to be paid, they just park. That's their, that's their biggest expense, that it would be the take-home, the vehicle policy that we're looking at, in the vehicles. Um, one thing that we're going to be working on, um, is repaving and fixing up their shooting range. It's a mess right now, and.
I can show you pictures that we should all be embarrassed about, that, that's what these guys have been training on.
The shooting range?
Yeah.
Oh, I agree with that, I agree.
Yeah, I, I talked to Harland last year when. I think, I think used to be they would have MFA come out there and spray it every once in a while, but they were just dumping old chemical, and it, it wasn't, it's probably worse than what. They're standing in now, but I went out there, didn't realize it was even at that point, and, uh, I can just say that some of the weeds were above the cab of the, or the hood of the track.
Oh, it's, it's ridiculous.
Uh, and you can't expect these guys to.
I'm just gonna send them out fingerless.
They'd be better off probably, honestly, if you wanna know the truth, so I did talk to Harland last year, and I, I mentioned it to, uh, to Tara during some other budget talks, but I, I do think that. Getting that hard surface would be on the list.
How many dolphins are in their shooting range?
Yeah.
They've got it. That's where they have to qualify, and that's just.
Yes.
All good, so that is getting done this year with the capital paving project. It'll be on the list with that.
Yeah, no brainer.
Correct, I'm gonna move along to our electric department. So, the electric department. Is in bad shape. Um, the north wall of the electric barn, huh?
I didn't hear you say job.
Oh, sorry. The north wall of the electric shop, um, is, uh, rotten pretty much.
Thought we just built a new shed.
It was added on to that building yet. So, um, that is gonna need to be, we've got some woodwork that needs to be done, some framing that's gonna need to be done, um, it's gotta be re-insulated and reskinned, that is gonna have to happen this year. The north wall.
Yeah, so.
Behind the addition.
Yeah, behind the addition.
Yeah, so you have a little bit that's behind the addition, but, uh, the majority of it is in the northwest corner. Uh, and this came about, apparently, there's been a bucket in the ceiling for the last fifteen to twenty years. Uh, they found it when they were demoing some of the walls, that has just been leaking. Um, when they went to take out. Piece of the wall just crumbled.
Inside wall, I think.
Inside there, yeah, it's, it's gone. So, um, majority of it's on that northwest corner of the top, where the bucket of water has been. So, it just, again, we've gotta get some of this stuff.
You just wanna replace the whole wall, not tear the building down and start over here?
No, the other three sides are, other than reskining and getting those up to speed, the bottoms are starting to kinda rust out on those. And then the roof, it's, it has skylights in it.
Metal, isn't it?
Yeah, so, uh. Yeah, it's just in, it's in, it's in bad shape, and then we're also wanting to put a ceiling inside there and insulate, so we're not just blowing heat out of the roof. Um, as well, so. There's something. Instead of kicking.
Cause the old shop, you don't park the truck in the old shop.
Yeah, there's still equipment in there.
Is it?
Yeah, so your, your skidloaders, minis, uh, those are in there, and then the, the digger trucks in there, um. Thirty-eight, and then. The new bucket, the new big bucket truck is still in there.
We're not asking for any new equipment this year, are they?
Uh, no, well, the, the one truck.
One truck.
But. Uh, thirty-eight, which is the service, one-ton.
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten miler, wanted to downsize it to a three-quarter ton.
They've got a lot of stuff in the last three or four years, very expensive.
Mm-hmm.
The wall's not too bad a deal.
No, and we're hoping that the whole wall's not what we saw on that corner, but we have to be prepared that if it was neglected to that extent. Who knows what you find when you start dealing back, that'll.
With regard to that.
Uh, third, the third service truck? Uh, I think it's getting to the point where we're starting to see a lot more maintenance done on it, um, and then the interior is just falling apart. Seats are.
That's a little bit of that.
No, that's just the pickup.
Do you think we can nurse it along the thirty other year?
Yeah.
Because I think we need to nurse it along for another year. You've got a lot of hard places.
Yeah, we don't struggle there at all, um. We are building a new substation, we'll need to. It'll be a couple of.
That's coming up.
We don't worry about that.
That's not a whole budget.
Hopefully we'll get that money.
She didn't ask right now though.
Well, we bought those from there, I mean, we actually have standard transfers that we do from the electric department to the cover expenses and general funds. The more we take out, the more we're gonna have to borrow when we have to do that substation.
So, but they're looking to get rid, that's a half ton.
It's done. So, what they, I think originally what they had that truck there for was, uh, to pull that back trailer and stuff, and since we no longer have that, there's no reason. So, once, once, whether it be this year, next year, whatever, we wanna downsize that truck, because all you're going to end up doing is, is kind of your parts truck, um, and your running truck. And then it would just pull a skid loader and mini when it does, so there's no need for it to be a one-ton truck anymore, so just wanna downsize that vehicle. It'll have a utility bed on it, but won't need to be a full one-ton.
Are you no look. Uh, budget-wise, whether it's this year or next year, how do the electric?
It's, um, as far as things being paid for out of the electric fund this upcoming fiscal year, it would be a building and a truck. And, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars in line clearance, but that's, that's the big things that they have. That's it. Like last year we bought, I don't know, about sixty thousand dollars, I don't think we'll get.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, that's the, that was the big bucket truck that came down the line.
Left in isolation. Considering what all the going on. What was that? Make transfers out of the one to three.
I thought we talked about putting money back last year, getting ready for that. Some safety thing.
We, we do, we, we do keep money back every year to start saving for that.
Wanna talk like five or six million? Don't touch it?
That's what we're gonna need.
Oh, I know, that's what I, I know that, that's what we're gonna need.
Yeah.
It goes, it goes.
That's probably.
Guess we could sell a police car.
Sell the six.
And a EMS truck.
Sell the six after your first storm.
That clock.
They're gonna start taking that on, man.
It's getting close to, isn't it, I mean.
Yeah, so we could, we could possibly look at it. Uh, yeah, it's normal. But you could, you could probably reuse it as lo, I guess, as long as it would fit on the chassis, so.
It's not so much the vehicle, it's the service.
Yeah, so a, a service bed on a, um, truck, I think was a le, eleven, I think, for the bed.
So what I can do is I can just get the numbers together, and when we're sitting down with more concrete numbers in front of us next month.
Out of the, maybe, or? More with the electric.
Yeah, I think it's one of those things that, you know, we just, we've gotta come up with a game plan, so right now we've got a ten-year fleet plan is what our vehicles are on. This thing's two thousand ten, you guys just got so, done saying you wanted to rotate vehicles, and now.
Yeah.
We're going the opposite direction, so I think direction more than anything, and it doesn't have to mimic what they're doing with their fleet, but we, just, just something so we can. We know every year, this is what we have coming down the pot.
All right, with that, one question I guess.
You know, and I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying it has to happen, but. In the, you know. Right.
Yeah.
That's, that's the unknown, man.
Just hopefully at the end of this, we have a, a plan.
Yeah, we've got a lot of vehicles, the city has, compared to probably what they had twenty years ago.
Well, twenty years, it doesn't have the population or the infrastructure that we.
Uh, I, I, that's, that's, we, we should, but what you just said, we have to have a plan, it's not like, oh, we're gonna need a water truck next year, two years or three years, no.
Yeah.
Every year, we gotta spend a hundred grand.
Yeah, okay, in all reality, we do, with everything that we've got, we've gotta be investing every year, and if we go back. In the past, we weren't, and that's what we've been digging out of, I mean.
Right, and that's, I think the last couple of years, we've seen that with equipment, is that we, we ran stuff to the ground.
You can't do that.
And then, and then now we're having to play catch-up.
We can't let that happen again.
It's on, it's actually on auction right now.
Okay, I thought it was still sitting.
Comes up the eighteenth of this month, yeah. Yeah, that, that, uh, the trencher backhoe, the old sewer camera system, and then the, the famous slikers on there, so.
Yeah, like you're gonna get anything out of that.
Doesn't matter to me.
We've done a great job of rebuilding what we needed to build, and now we've just gotta keep up with it and not get back into that position. Ten years. You know, if we flip to eleven, okay, but can't flip to twelve, and, you know, that'd be within reason.
Like you said, this truck was from twenty ten, so it's fourteen.
It was fifteen, it's fifteen, yeah.
That's right. It's like not doing math for a.
Just five years into the next rotation?
Yeah, yeah.
With all that, the wall is okay to build, I think, don't you think?
At least the wall.
I'd say we start at the building.
Wall needs to.
We all just fall in on what is in there.
Next.
Well, keeping with the electric department, um, so I know most of us are on social media, or we've been talking to people, everybody's upset with their electric bills right now. Um. Unfortunately, cost of everything is going up, and, um, we have to keep up with that too.
Yep.
Um, so, I wanted to make sure, um, when I was looking at rate increases, are we sure we should increase the electric rate? As we've, remember a few years ago, when I said, this is what we're looking at in twenty thirty, when we lose our electric, our current electric contract. Um, what we could be looking at as an increase in twenty thirty, and it could be upwards of forty percent, which is why we've been slowly adding. I mean, we've also had increased costs with transformers and wire and materials and wages, so it's not like the increases we're just padding the budget with, so it's been spent. But, um, in saying that, we're currently charging twelve point five three cents per kilowatt hour, okay? Um, Columbia charges fourteen cents per kilowatt hour, now, they do generation, they're gonna be more expensive than us. Uh, the national electricity average rate is sixteen point fifty-four cents per kilowatt out, hour. The average Missouri rate is thirteen point twenty-three, so we do our five and a half percent increase like we plan to do every year, until it comes time for a new contract. That gets us up to thirteen point two-two, which is just below the Miss, Missouri average, per kilowatt hour, so. Well, it's painful, and a lot of the new homes that are being built in Centralia right now are all electric, so they're only using electric, they don't have that benefit of having gas, which is a little bit cheaper than electricity. But, um. I just. So, throwing that out there, we are well below the, uh, national, or the Missouri average rate for electric. Um, we bumped to five and a half, now this is what it is for this past year, it's, um, I'll bet when I run this number next year, it's higher than thirteen point two-three.
Yeah, well, and, and some of the complaints that have come through about the electric bill being, well, there wasn't a rate changes here at this point, it's this calendar year, twenty-five, so.
No, but it's the winter after.
Yeah, I know.
So we rate.
Some people were saying.
They're only holding the next two weeks, they're paying loads in the single digits and highs and maybe the teens.
Well, people were saying their January bill was up hundreds of dollars more than their December bill, what did the city do to them? City didn't do anything.
Didn't do anything, it's just.
Nothing changed. And they probably just looked at your house.
Yeah.
Probably, they, not well insulated, not.
Yeah.
So I did put out a reminder.
I, I think you just keep the rate increasing.
Yeah, if you don't, you don't have one heck of an.
Oh, yeah, I think they won't like forty percent in one year.
Yeah. Oh, that, you know.
No.
Reality, you gotta do that, you gotta do it, I mean, I'm sitting here, I don't even look at my bill.
It softens the debt, we have to pay when it comes down to.
Linda, you get you all right, we're raising the rate and relief.
I've known him since before he was born.
Don't let her have a gun.
All right, I'm gonna get off the, the electric department.
So we are, we're gonna, when's, when's that going to, Pat?
Well, it'd be April one, but you wouldn't see it until the May bill.
The May bill? Oh, look.
So. I was asked to get information for, together for the pilot that we had, that I told you guys about, for the payment in lieu of taxes. Payment in lieu of taxes. Correct. And I don't think that it's gonna be as shocking as you might think, I did do five and seven percents, um, I really think that five percent would be fine. Had we had a pilot in place this fiscal year, that's passed in twenty twenty-four, and I ran bills from January one to December thirty-one, so we had a full twelve-month idea. Um, the average bills you see over here on the right, um, that would be an average bill for our customers, that is, all the bills we had all year averaged out. Um, what you see at the top left is what it would have added had it been in place, so water at five percent would have been right around fifty-six thousand, sewer would have been right around forty thousand, electric would have been right around twenty-seven. So about three hundred thousand dollars that could have gone to the general fund had we had a pilot in place. Um, the way that that would affect our utility customers is what you see on the bottom left, whereas, and Linda, you can have a copy if you would like to see what we've.
If I don't have any idea, I'm, I'm, by talking to Landon, I missed out.
But, um, water, the, the customer would see a two-point-one-three charge, uh, sewer would be one, a dollar fifty-six. Electric would be seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
So this is the payment?
This is the payment in lieu of taxes, and it would go.
You pointed, I don't understand.
So, payment in lieu of taxes is, is what Sydney had explained to us last month. Okay, so, um, basically, it's kind of like, um, gross receipts that you see on your utility bill. When you have a privatized utility company, they have. When you have a privatized utility company, they have charges that they're able to pass along to their utility customers to help pay for infrastructure and all of those things. Um, municipalities will have that, so what we have is a payment in lieu of taxes, an option that we can add to utility bills to help pay for, um, infrastructure and for the general fund.
So this would be in addition to five percent increase?
Yeah. Yeah. This goes directly into the general fund.
Crazy question.
So anyway, you would not transfer money from those other accounts to the general fund if we did that?
So the reason why we transfer money from electric, water, and sewer is because our utilities.
Your management's cost.
And to help pay for city hall, because it's a water building, and we would still need to do that.
Yeah. The long story short, we can't pay any state tax. We try and try and try to pass these tax, and we can't pass these tax. We, we have done everything. Thank you.
I agree with that.
But this.
We, we still have to support, um, essential city functions.
Yes.
And, um, it is allowable in the law. It's been to the Missouri Supreme Court, um, and this is, this is an option. And I told you guys, I'll give you some numbers, and this is what it looks like for a five percent and a seven percent, but I really think that the five percent, um, gets us to where.
Well, five is just gonna raise everybody at two dollars thirteen, two dollars fifty-six, and seven fifty-eight, right?
On average, that's the average bill, yes.
Everybody eleven dollars a month.
How do we go with the five?
Yeah.
They're showing you.
The others, too. That's a five, knowing we may tweak on the road, but like I said, we give almost a quarter million dollars into the general fund, which is, we desperately. Would be a game changer.
It'd be three hundred thousand.
Good call, I'll pay.
I'll, yeah, I.
You're fine.
That's, that's.
It's been a long.
That is.
You're fine.
So we don't, they don't, we don't have a vote on this?
You pass an ordinance.
We vote, we vote.
Yeah. We think we could put together.
And we fill this area up out here, all these seats.
I, I get it, um.
What do we do?
Will's gonna be paying.
I'll say, hey, we try to do this as a use tax, we're driving five years running. Yeah. And you hear those people, you know, when we walk out the door, you go on here, and it's different. You don't do this in here.
Well, we, like, like I said, we, we have to get a little paid for the city functions that are paid for out of our general fund. That's our police department, it's our fire department volunteers, it's our sidewalks, it's our roads, all of that is paid for out of our general fund, and we do it tax. Our tax revenues are going down, I mean, it's, it's kind of a struggle sometimes, just trying to get through. Our pay for everything. Yes.
And that is the hard part, and that's been the struggle, I mean, you know, you know, you know, you know, our conversations over the years, especially when we go into these cycles, we struggle with that every year. How do we minimize the impact on those on fixed income? Because that is the hardest part, wouldn't you? Love ones in that exact scenario, it's how do we minimize? That's the hard part with it.
We really try to be as fiscally responsible as we can be. Um, when the guys, we meet up for our budget talks, we talk about, okay, what's the needs versus what you want? Because if you don't need it, we may not be able to get it this year, but I wanna know about it, so we can start planning for it and go from there, but.
Which would work out to an app, about ten dollars a month per customer.
Yes, but when we're looking at the other rate increases that we're gonna look at, there's. Um, another rate increase that we're gonna have to look at is trash. Danes is allowed to increase two and a half percent every year on the contract, and, and he is. So we're, we're gonna have to pass that one. So it's gonna go up, two and a half percent isn't that much, but I'll get you guys all those numbers, um. Okay.
Good job.
People will complain about that, but we're running it ourselves, we're paying.
Yeah, we're paying Danes over five hundred thousand dollars a year at this point. The forty-three thousand a month. Paying over five hundred thousand, and I know a garbage truck would probably cost two, three hundred thousand.
If you, yeah, but you couldn't get one for three years. If you wanted to buy one, you couldn't wa- buy one for three years.
That's what they.
I mean, if he decided to change, we couldn't change for years.
Three hundred thousand for a garbage truck, and that would be anything you want.
Yep, and the work comp on, um, those type of. Yeah, free activity, yeah. And I was gonna suggest that tonight, but then when I got thinking about it, it was like, we, yeah. Moving to, yeah, two, one for a backup.
Four people.
Yeah, it'd be.
Yeah.
We still didn't do it the way people would want it then, you all told me. We ain't never going, nobody's ever going back to.
Yep, we're hitting water and sewer next. So sewer main lining, the number is, is gonna look bad, but we've got four hundred thousand dollars for our ARPA grant. Plus, we've got a hundred thousand dollars still in there from our original ARPA money that we've had rolled over, so it's five hundred thousand dollars. So we're budgeting for six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into our main lining this, this year. Um, but like I said, that's, most of that's already been budgeted for and gonna be paid for. Uh, we would like to go ahead and get the shed for the dump truck and the sewer van built. We had already put thirty-five thousand dollars in last year to carry over to this year for the cost of that, which is about seventy thousand dollars. Um, the big thing for the water department is we need to start budgeting for the water tower painting. That project is.
What?
Exorbitantly expensive.
Water.
Water tower maintenance and repainting.
You do that? Your lift, go up there.
Over a million dollars.
Well, technology and electrical, the substitution all the same day, we're in trouble.
No, that's why we wanna start budgeting for it now, hopefully when we have to do that.
Um, nothing's urgent, so.
There's the, the outside or the inside?
Well, so the insides have not been painted for a long, long time. And the report we got back was, you should start to think about putting that in kind of a plan.
Okay.
Yeah, no, but the outsides, you can like power wash those things so many times, and then they start to fade and rust starts to come through. You guys remember last year, we had a hole in the bottom of the wand that was placed, um, so those are all signs and symptoms of.
So what's the million dollars, what's that incorporate? Repainting of the water towers?
That's Danby.
Yeah, I mean.
That's.
Well, that's, that's.
Hell, that's different, five hundred thousand apiece. Oh, that makes a lot of.
I think one, like, three hundred something thousand, the big one, the, the bigger chunk.
The city crews can't do that?
No, no.
A lot of trouble.
Yeah. Or the cars in hubble?
The cars in hubble. Yeah.
So, what deserves so much money a year?
When you, we say about two, three years, we need to be looking at getting that scheduled.
I would say three for sure, you know, I mean, three, three to five year plan of, of course, once we get to that point, it'll be one point.
Well, now, how much money can we get citizens to kick in for the tap they're on and stuff, instead of us having to pay to put a tap there on?
It might not be a bad idea.
You know what, I'll talk to the school about that.
Yeah, right.
I'll see it, I'll see it.
They might be willing to do a fundraiser.
Yeah, a fundraiser I can see.
Um, what year was that?
I don't have a problem with it, but I know that it's gonna be.
It's been.
Only last one of years.
The last one they did was.
Last time painted was two thousand and one and two thousand and two, and it was the exterior only.
So this will be the last one to deal with it, I will.
Thanks for passing it on, Johnny.
Yeah, that was good. So, just something, uh, and that's one of those calls that, what was the, do you have that written down, the cost of? When they painted it, I know it was like thirty-five thousand or something, wasn't it?
Oh, I don't know, I didn't.
Yeah, I think, I think back then, it was like.
Well, but you said it's.
Thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Doing the interior. I don't think it was thirty-five.
No, it wasn't very much.
You're doing the interior.
Yeah, yeah, but. Maybe it was just making it look pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might, that might have been the reason.
Anything else for water and sewer?
Uh, we, he wants to update some of our larger meters, um, we've got like, what, two or three million gallons for some of them.
Oh, yeah, easy.
Um, they are very expensive, so if we get to a comfortable place where we're like, okay, let's go and budget for some of these, um, he would like to budget thirty to fifty thousand dollars. So just heads up on that. If I can make numbers work and put away money for the towers, then I might put those in there. Other than that, that's the, that's a big cost in the water department. Okay, um, so sticking with water, um, Aaron has done the, the math. And last year, I know we did a water rate increase. Um, this year, it costs more, almost a dollar more, um, to make a ga- a, a thousand gallons of water. Um, so to produce a thousand gallons of water with the increased cost of, um, chlorine and aqua hop chemicals, and the lime and labor. It's six dollars and forty-eight cents per thousand gallons to do that. Um, that, um, and I, I need for you guys to understand that that doesn't include emergency repairs of water mains. Um, when something goes wrong with water towers, um, we don't have built into our water rate to cover that kind of cost. So I'm not saying we need to do all of that right now, but if we get up to this or halfway to this, and we put a plan in place to increase, um, over the next three years or, or however many years to get us to where we need to be, I think we really need to think about building in, um, our water infrastructure and what it's costing us to, to upkeep it, so that we're able.
Yeah, the cost is, we had to replace those water lines when it was real hot because of the valves. What is, I mean, that, what, now?
It was a federal summer.
Uh, no, it wasn't quite, quite that much. I'd, I'd say it was probably in the forty-five to fifty, but it was a week, that was a week of. One week out of the year that cost that much.
Which, I mean, you're gonna have.
Yeah.
We got a lot of old lines.
Right.
You're gonna have a lot of, a lot of valves that.
Yeah.
You know, when it gets hot and dry.
Where do we add on that lead study as to how many lines we have to replace? So far, we've not found any lead in our system.
On the, on the city side.
On the city side.
Yeah, I think there was a couple, um.
Oh, I know there's.
Headed for.
Downtown, but they called out.
But, uh, so last time when we were, uh, at a conference, we, DNR was there, and they aren't sure of what the next step is.
This is no from the beginning.
You're, yeah, you're absolutely right, and she admitted that, uh, I'm thankful she did, because everybody there was like, where, where do we start, where do we stop? And she said, nobody needs to get in a hurry, because we're not sure where the endpoint is here, so.
Yeah, I mean, it was obvious, they didn't, this was just one of those policies they put out there.
Yeah, it came from the EPA's work.
Yeah, and there's no.
But, yeah, that's, uh, we have to keep that in our back pocket in case something flies up. But that was something that the funding from them, and this may change four hundred times before it starts, but the funding that they were going to provide could not be paid to city staff to replace those.
Well, and who knows if there's even gonna be any rates available at all for a lot.
Right, right, do what?
No, just so, so you have to pay for outside.
Yeah, so the city would have to kind of work with a subcontractor, and then. DNR would funnel money to the city, the city would then have to allocate that money to each customer, but then the ladies in the office were gonna have to keep track of those loan payments.
It sounded like a money.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And a headache.
Uh, man, yeah, thankfully, they've kind of, it's a great thing, obviously, it needs to be pulled out of the ground. Uh, gosh, there's gotta be a better way to do it.
Sure, you know, like everything else, we gotta figure out we have.
Yes.
So, yeah, so all of the maintenance and infrastructure. Yeah, we may not be able to get there in a year.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be a pretty hard hit, um, all at once, but.
I mean, with seven dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we have to make an incremental adjustment for two, three, five years, whatever it is, we're gonna have to go.
Okay, I will work on that.
Develop a plan, stuff, everything else, we're doing.
Well, we have a pretty good level in the last, in the years.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, one thing that, yeah, I wouldn't say helps ease our minds when we look at these, but when we do look at some of the rural water systems who are charging more per gallon, who are literally pumping out of a well and chlorinating, and then our citizens are getting the water pumped through a well, through an aerator, through a whole water plant, and we're still a dollar and some change below what these rural waters are.
Yeah.
You know, it just doesn't make sense.
And, and it's great what we're doing.
Yeah.
To a certain, certain extent, yeah.
But I'm thinking of people's overall.
Absolutely.
And we're talking to increases every single month. We're already hearing it, and everybody's facing inflation, still in, in areas. We're staying in black to ourselves, the city.
But at least we're not. We spend six hundred thousand dollars annually on water?
No.
This is not the, not the leap year thing.
The only reason we're good.
Go.
That's, that's the only reason.
We didn't do it. We usually spent, I think, in the hundred and fifty to two of them. Which is a good amount, you know, but we're just obviously blessed we can do this much at one time, and, and.
How many plazins are gonna be coming in and do a whole lot of work?
Uh, I'd say we're probably getting close to, I wanna say thirty to forty percent.
Crap.
Yeah. But I will tell you, our flows from the last three years, and obviously, we've had some, a little drier summers than normal, but we have seen impacts at the flumes, at the lagoons, uh, we're not getting the infiltration that we were in the past.
Those are the lines.
Yeah.
Well, and then you've got a lot of new stuff that doesn't happen.
Right, yeah, yeah, the plastic, no brainer. Uh, but, yeah, as far as what we've lined in the last probably two to three, four years, we are seeing that benefit when it rains. We're not having the water come up out of the, the manhole at the RV dump, uh, like it used to, so it's working.
Does Columbia do this?
Yeah.
Well, as good as we did, or they better.
They probably did about eight millions.
Who cares, right now?
I was gonna say, I'm sorry, I really was just planning on doing high levels, this is what it is, I was, I know it would be a lot this long, I would order food, so I. Okay, so, um.
Is it, which was?
Huh?
Where were you gonna pay food out of, what budget?
Sixty-two or sixty-one? Anyway, okay, everybody's being talked about, they all gotta pay. Okay, so, um, the, the next increase is for taps, water taps. Um, the, the cost to do those has, has gone up quite a bit, so right now, we charge a thousand dollars for a water tap. It costs us on average, per water tap, almost fourteen hundred dollars, so we'd like to increase the water tap fee to fifteen hundred dollars.
It gets passed on to the.
It gets passed on to the building, yep, for homeowners, whoever's doing the tap. Um, the second one's probably made a little bit harder to chew on, but, um, tap across the road is way more expensive. Um, it's almost thirty-six hundred, so we would like it to go up to thirty-eight hundred to forty thousand dollars. Um, they don't really do those very often, but when they do, uh, we, quite a bit of the cost, so.
We need to, we need to cover.
And one thing to, to add to this is that some of our lots, we don't have a whole lot of lots sitting anymore in town. So these are gonna be a few far between that, you know, somebody wants to stick a house somewhere that may not be exactly where it was supposed to be, so this is covering those, especially cost whenever we.
So you wanna go thirty-seven fifty, thirty-eight hundred?
I mean, that much doesn't matter.
Thirty-seven fifty versus thirty-eight, huh?
What, what's it costing?
Thousand, we don't, we don't differentiate, water tap is a thousand bucks.
But across the road, right?
We don't have any.
Across the road is. We don't have any same.
Same fee.
All right, that one was easy. We've talked about the water budget, okay, wastewater rates. So last year, I had worked with Missouri Rural Water and they said that our wastewater rates were, uh, too low. Um, but when I did the budget and with what we had to increase last year, decided we could wait. The wastewater budget was fine for this year, we're not gonna be able to do that this year, it's gotta go up, so I'm sorry. It's gonna be the same rate it was, um, but she gave us two options. Basically, right now where we're at, because of the payments that we're having to make on the wastewater loan, um, we run around two hundred and six thousand dollars short. So there, they gave us two options that we could do, so we can increase the minimum to twenty-five dollars and the per hundred from a dollar ninety-two to three dollars, which would get us to about forty-four hundred dollars in black. Dollar ninety-two. Three dollars. Okay. No, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The current minimum is twenty-two dollars and eighty cents with, um, per thousand gallons being a dollar ninety-two. Above that. So they're saying the new minimum needs to be twenty-five dollars.
That's, okay.
With.
That's, that's much.
The per thousand gallons at three dollars, so it's not that bad, but it's still gonna be a little bit. Option two is to keep the minimum the same at the twenty-two eighty, but increase the, um, per thousand gallons to three dollars and sixty cents. Because it's just a little bit more, um, instead of being forty-four hundred dollars in the black, it'd be forty-six hundred dollars in the black. So it would just be deciding which one we would rather do, raise the minimum and the per thousand gallon, or just raise the per thousand gallon.
Can you raise just the minimum?
No. Yeah.
The way that that would have less of an impact on like a single person.
First option would raise, and that, so she did a custom, a customer bill for five thousand gallons of usage, right now would be thirty-two dollars and forty cents. With option one, it'd be forty dollars, with option two, it'd be forty dollars and eighty cents. So really, neither option's gonna be a whole lot of difference, but option one is a little bit less of the, the.
When's the next time we might have to do this?
This one probably. I wouldn't think wastewater, we completely raise that often, I just need to know this one fairly soon because we do have to have a public hearing to, to increase.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, three.
Twenty-five and three, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to do it next year.
Yeah.
Well, that's definitely different on businesses.
I was saying, then we may not have to do it next year, this is time of the bond that we had multiple years where we had to increase them.
So to get us up to that point, so we got to the twenty-two eighty because of the bond, but, um, with the payments for the last, what, three, four years, we've been paying, um, just the interest. And now we're actually paying principal and our rates are, are, payments are increasing. So we need to increase that we're not losing money every year.
Okay, this is a question, Ron, whether or not this would be a different, uh, rate for your.
There's so many things that are different prices for residents versus businesses, so.
So last year, we got rid of the tiered water rate, thousand gallons of water is five dollars and thirty-five cents for everybody.
Right.
Um, sewer rate, the, the only thing different now is that our rural customers pay twenty percent higher than in-town customers.
But there's some things though, that there's a different rate for residential versus business.
Like the minimums? Yeah.
You know, the dog's electric bill is like twice what mine at home is, and it's because there's different rates. I know the trash is a different rate, isn't it?
Yeah, so com- commercial, they're like the minimums on like larger meters and then commercial buildings, yes, the minimums are different. Yeah, that's, that's.
So you're not bothering them, you're just going after the residential?
Well, that's still, that's still based off the water. The, the sewer bill. Yeah.
Okay, um, I believe the last thing I have, have to deal with the street department and then we'll be out of here. So the big, the big thing we gotta do this year is the boom mower, we can't get around it. Um, we have to be able to mow, um.
Just the, just the mower.
It's just the mower, so it's sixty, it's sixty thousand dollars.
The, no, the, so the, the boom and, and mow, one unit.
The tractor stays, he just.
Yeah, so remember, we decided to put the new engine in the tractor. Yeah, so the tractor's good, we'll run for.
That's the big thing.
How, how much is this boom mower?
Sixty thousand.
So we got a small herd of sheep.
If you guys would let us do native grasses that only grow this tall.
You gotta have shepherd.
Lavender?
What we need to do is.
We can do clover, um, just the clover.
The big deal is, as much as anything, it's the places where people refuse to mow their own ditch.
That's true.
We've got to find a way to make them mow their own.
I'll give you a ditch.
Hey, I know, I'll cross my lawn, but I can't mow.
We can spray the. The grass killer.
Well, yo, you got, that's freaking.
Dirt pills.
I'm all in favor.
That's what a lot of cities do.
What if it costs us?
Don't mow their ditches, they spray them.
Cost us every year to stay.
And we want to do that.
Um, it doesn't take as much weed killer now that we've got it.
Now that you've cut it off.
Yeah. Right, now that we've got it under control, it's not.
Why do we have to do that? Why aren't stamens being made to do that?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
We, we have been looking into our ordinances, um, a little bit more closely at the exact wording of them. And the problem with some of our ordinances, it's worded this way here, but in another ordinance, it says this. So homeowners are responsible unless it's in a utility easement. That fence line is in a utility easement. So if, if a homeowner has something that's growing into our stuff.
Yeah.
But it's on their property, but it's affecting our stuff, then yes, it's on the homeowner's credit. But if it's in our utility easements or it's on city right of way, we gotta take.
That fence has been there for, for fifty years or more and it's fallen down, all, all the brush and it is holding it up.
I, trust me, I've al- often wondered if it would be cheaper in the long run to just, and I don't know that he.
To dose the fence out.
Well, we first moved the town thirty years ago, they had cattle in there, but they don't anymore.
Well, and I, I thought, and this, this is just, I thought at some time that he had to keep cattle on there for so many months.
And likely something like.
But I, I'd have never seen anything and, and he hasn't been following that, so I don't know that that's true, but.
Used to be.
I'm sorry, it's not part of the budget.
Well, but sweeping it and, and, and dosing it out is.
It is after nine, we're trying to.
I know.
So it, it sounds like we, we need to replace it.
Is more. You've only got the bid.
Pretty much, their last year, so it should be right about the same. Um, the salt building is about to fall over, there's, there's no getting around it.
Go ahead.
There.
I've only been up here for so many years, some of you have sat up here for many years, so I don't take any blame for that.
We'll still put more salt in it.
The last time they went to put salt in it, it almost fell over, so it's gonna have to be taken care of. Um, Jimmy's getting me some numbers, see what that's gonna cost. There's been some talk about making it, one of those hoop buildings, I think we've moved away from that because it could get damaged, um.
But yeah, for what it does and what it needs to be, you're not gonna have a whole, you know, obviously it's not the tachyonol, it's just framed up skin, so you keep the stuff out of the weather and, yeah, that's all it needed.
There's no door on it either, is there?
No, it's open.
We also had some stormwater stuff that we had tried to work on this year that didn't work out. We, um, because of some very heavy rains, it, it, we had a certain area of town that, um, flooded pretty, pretty good and we had a number of complaints. Um, we think that we can fix this one area fairly easily, so we are working on it this fiscal year. And if any rolls over in the next fiscal year, I'm gonna get that on. The budget, so you guys can look at it, but we think we can, um, drain an entire area of town fairly efficiently. Now, will it hold water still? Yes, but not for as long as it is right now.
We've got a bad bottleneck point right now that corner of, uh, Alcoa and Allen. Um, for whatever reason, wasn't done when they built those new houses there. Uh, when all that happened.
Did it go east or what?
West.
Go east or west?
Goes west. So basically from Cox Street on Allen to Brighton on Allen goes to that corner. And it's, uh, way undersized, it is currently a twelve inch pot and a can.
Where's it going out to from?
Goes west to the railroad tracks underneath.
Then where?
He goes under the, the tracks.
Under railroad tracks in Columbia?
Columbia Street. So, yeah, gonna be painful tearing up brand new driveways, but if we wanna help with some water situations on the south back down.
You got estimates for that, Jamie?
Yeah. No, not terrible, I think it was twenty, twenty-one.
So the, is that gonna go on the street of Alcoa, on Alcoa?
It's gonna help that area.
It, yeah, so they're currently where those new houses are on the south side of Alcoa.
That's where you, that's where you.
We would have to replace from that corner at the intersection and there's only a couple, uh, houses right now that are open ditched still. So we would clo- go ahead and put inlets in and close those in first time.
Doesn't that come out right there at Countryland?
Yeah, right, yeah, it comes right under the tracks and.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor? You opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. See you next time.